So we have a good, a good forum here. I'm Megan Blackwell, the Chair of the Finance Committee. And our members discussed a lot about Article 26 and 27. And as a whole, we felt its complexity warranted an informational session just to explain the questions that we had, some of the analysis we went through, and hear from town meeting questions, and also just have the opportunity with more than five minutes to dig into this very complex article. So I want to recognize the team of Finance Committee members who helped put this presentation and analysis together because it really is a team effort. So our FinCom representative to the EFPBC is John Miller. So he was at all the meetings and fed back information to the Finance Committee. Stefan Karp helped with the three-year plan and modeling the impact of the Carriage House on operational reserves, operating reserve, sorry. And a lot of active Finance Committee members participated in, in the discussions, discussions with school committee members and, and otherwise, and other boards. So we put together a few slides and I'll share my screen. And just as during our budget hearing, I request that everyone save their questions until the end. And then we're, we'll be happy to entertain questions. Yeah, I'll change. Okay. So here's the outline of today's presentation. I'm going to walk through our understanding of the goals of Articles 26 and 27, and then highlight some of the identified risks. Risks in construction timing, risks in construction impact, risk in the financing and uncertainties of the project. And then I have a slide on relocation alternatives for the school administration, be it temporary or permanent. Okay. So our understanding of Article 26 is as it's posed, you're voting to renovate the Carriage House. And you're renovating the Carriage House because you want to relocate the school administration. And you want to relocate the school administration because you want to create swing space for Lynch. And you want to create Lynch swing space. And then when Parkhurst is now available again, after it's been used for swing space, you want a long-term plan for what to do with Parkhurst. Article 27 is more focused on just creating swing space for Lynch and in funding the study for the modulators and what's needed. But I want to emphasize our understanding is that both articles, the main goal, the driver, is to create swing space for Lynch. So our first question was on the construction timing. Can the Carriage House finish in time? Those of you who have done your own home construction know that the schedule is usually just notional and a guide, and it's usually extended and not shortened. But also there's significant construction challenges beyond schedule. So costs, supply chain issues, labor shortages, which could delay the, the construction. And also when you're performing work on historical building, that presents more challenges. So we were concerned in any potential delays that would then increase costs and more importantly, delay the preparation of Parkhurst for Lynch students. And if it's long enough, it would then propose a delay, create a delay for the Lynch project. So this was flagged as a potential problem that could impact the goal of the article, which is creating swing space for Lynch and accelerating the project. And in conversations and questions, so in response to some of the questions we asked about the schedule, we were just recently told that there are ways to accelerate. So for example, if all the necessary work isn't completed to occupy the Carriage House, they could apply for a permit, just to tell, uh, there's a certain term here. Allowance to
The temporary certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I was looking for the exact term, but right, so it's a temporary certificate. So yeah, that, that's, you know, you understand the main point. Thank you, John. Our second concern was a risk of building on an occupied site. So initially, a cost savings was expected for building Lynch at an empty site. And now, when you bring the Carriage House into the mix, there's this six-month build proposed during the school year at a site that's less than 50 yards from Ambrose Elementary School. So the Finance Committee had concerns about the cost, the schedule, and the safety of performing this work so close to an occupied school. And sorry, I'm thinking as I'm talking, and I left this slide too soon. So one of the options was this temporary occupancy certificate. The other option that was suggested to us was putting some of the school administration into a modular at Ambrose. Seeing a picture of Ambrose jogged my memory. So that was presented as an option. Should the Carriage House be delayed? Okay, we've mentioned this, financing. Okay. What is the impact of the proposed funding option? So we see a few options and a few options were proposed for the $5.8 million cost of the Carriage House. One was increasing debt, adding debt service. So this could be implemented in one of two ways. So having bond anticipation notes issued in July of '22, '23, '24, and I believe '25. I'll look at my notes just to make sure I have it right. Yes, '22, '23, '24, and '25. And then following that, you would issue a 25-year general obligation bond. The other option, because interest rates are increasing, is just start with a 25-year general obligation bond beginning in, in 2023. This is concerning to the Finance Committee because the $5.98 million project cost represents 4% of the town's outstanding debt, which is $143 million. And this may lead to a downgrading of the important AAA bond rating because of a material increase in the indebted amount. The other option, well, a kind of a slight riff on this was proposed that the schools fund part of these bond anticipatory note payments. And the school committee, to our understanding, has not, has not discussed that option yet. So another option is using free cash to fund the debt payments. And we know free cash fluctuates. This decision could accelerate the need for an operational override, given the uncertainties of the contractual renegotiations. And it also competes with $20 million of other identified capital needs in addition to identified accessibility improvements for the town. So the use of capital stabilization funds for interest payments was not improved, that was not approved by the Capital Planning Committee, which is the town's designated body for prioritizing capital investments. And I want to note that a townwide vote for a debt exclusion override was not viewed as a feasible path forward because of the schedule of the proposed project. Another option, financing option, was using rental proceeds from Parkhurst. The Finance Committee viewed this as tenuous because the need and the demand for rental space, it's, it's difficult to know until you have a building that's ready and you have people knocking at the door. So the Finance Committee suggests further investigation on the Parkhurst rental front and perhaps hiring a real estate consultant to inform how much rent is, is really feasibly possible. Okay. So I, John, you have your hand raised, but I'm not going to call you yet. I have requested that everyone just wait until the end, just so you know, I'm not ignoring you. Okay. So we did modify our three-year plan for Article 26 interest payments based on what we heard last night from Mariano pointing out that there are increased revenues, increased funds in hand. So starting from a current operating reserve of 14 and a half percent, we modeled these three scenarios. In blue is no Carriage House, in orange is Carriage House, option one, that I mentioned, a few years of band payments, and then you start the 25-year general bond. And then option two, where you just start with the general, like 25-year bond. And there is a spread, but the main point is that in '24, FY '24, you're still in the middle of the recommended window of 6% to 10%. And in '25, you're in need of the operational override. So there are other uncertainties and cost assumptions in this. So it's uncertain how many Lynch students will have to move. We're waiting on the fall 22 enrollment numbers, and the schools will look at that and then decide how many students will move and where. And at this time, open seats are not considered. But as we heard last night, there, the classrooms from K to five are not at full capacity. And there's also potential for additional costs for transportation, building costs. There are assumptions on the timing and the potential for the Parkhurst rental revenue. And furthermore, the 2017 master plan has been mentioned a lot, but its assumptions for enrollment have not been realized. And also, if you read the master plan, it's, it's not a certainty that the Carriage House is the best option. It actually proposes three options for the school administration, the Carriage House, Lynch in Morocco. Okay, we're almost done. So alternatives for relocation of administration. So here are the two options before town meeting. Article 26 proposes to renovate the Carriage House, move the administration to the Carriage House, and swing the Lynch kids to eight modulators at Parkhurst. To Parkhurst and then add eight modulators. So this is roughly $9.3 million. Article 27, cost of $5.6 million, nothing happens to the Carriage House, keep the administration in Parkhurst, and swing Lynch kids to part of Parkhurst and use 16 modulators. But there's a question, you know, why swing kids instead of staff? So another option is to put the administration into modulators. This costs less, requires smaller modulators, and fewer ones. So this is significance, a significant cost savings over Article 26 at about $4 million. And an option that FinCom is suggesting, suggesting is discussed, and there, there are positives, there's negatives, but it should be part of the discussion. Another option is moving the administration to rental space. So the EFPBC estimate on this cost is $650,000 to $700,000. There was a quote for a space in Woburn for $150,000, so considerably less. The Lynch kids would still be at Parkhurst and you would need eight modulators. And then there are many other options that haven't seriously been considered and vetted and discussed fully. So renting St. Mary's, that's open, open classrooms in town, using space in Town Hall or multiple elementary schools that have vacant classrooms or modulators, using Mystic School, part, part of Mystic School, part of the classrooms there. Also discussing temporary work from home plans or hoteling, well, shared offices where administration can come in alternate days, for example, or, or some combination of these options. So, um, like I said, they have pros and cons, and we would really like to hear from the schools and other interested parties on the viability and the cost of these options. I think. Okay, here's my summary. So the Finance Committee voted unanimously against Article 26. We saw it as added Lynch, added risk to the Lynch project timing and cost, added costs and disruption of Ambrose School, problematic funding sources versus the alternative. Now, this sub-bullet is changed, my apologies. So the operating override would still be in FY '24, but it is competing for other projects. So we have this operational override looming. We have $20 million of capital projects and other needs of the town. There's uncertainties in the number of students moving from Lynch. They're, right now, Article 26 is the most expensive short-term alternative for the administration. There are assumptions on the timing and potential Parkhurst revenue. They're optimistic. The permanent home for the administration is, it would be a benefit to have it settled, but there's many other options that aren't fully vetted yet. And the potential income from Parkhurst would be positive after using it as a swing space and potentially using it as a swing space for Morocco down the road. I know that the plans for swing space for Morocco haven't been finalized. There's been some ideas, but those need to be vetted. So as a whole, Finance Committee also unanimously supported Article 26 that we feel is more aligned with a lower-cost, lower-risk Lynch reconstruction. So now I would like to open it for questions. But before I call on any raised hands, are there any other comments from my fellow FinCom members? John?
Megan, I think you meant to say you unanimously support Articles 27.
Oh, if I didn't, I'm sorry. So I was trying to read my, my bullet at the bottom. So yes, we unanimously supported Articles 27. Thank you, John. Okay, seeing no other raised hands from the Finance Committee, let me call on patient John. Thank you for your patience for waiting the whole time.
Thank you very much, and a great job. I just wanted to focus on, on the cost estimate a little bit. When I was following around the EFPBC a couple of months ago, I heard, you know, straight from one of the contractor members that the bids were coming in 30% higher. And I think we heard that from the gent last night as far as on the bridge reconstruction, too. So the $5.9 million to do the Carriage House, I mean, for me, just, you know, following it again the last couple of months and then seeing it, I would just, if you could get into the, the numbers a little bit there, because that seems like a real low confidence level that that's actually going to be that piece of it for the construction. And then, of course, when you talk about high-risk delays, whenever, any type of project, that's always a direct correlation to increased cost. So my sense is this is probably around $10 million to do the Carriage House if that was to go forward. But if you could dig in on the cost estimate and who looked at it, or, you know, or just, you know, just looking for more information on that, thank you.
Sure, thanks, John. I defer to our EFPBC liaison of John Miller.
Can I just ask a quick question that's an add-on to what Mr. Dobbins asked? And that is, if indeed the construction costs go up and we're taking all of this out of free cash, excuse me, how would that then impact future finances going forward in terms of like our, our risk? I just thought that was a good question. It just made me think that curve would change, and that's something important to look at. Thank you.
Sure, thanks, Pam. So first, John Miller, if you wouldn't mind addressing John Dobbins' questions on the breakdown, your understanding of the breakdown of costs for the Carriage House?
Well, the, the designer is Tappe, the same designer for the Lynch School, who I think they designed the VO School. They, they and Chris Nixon have presented estimates to EFPBC. And between last year and now, they say that the cost has not moved, John, because they took scope out of the design from, since, since the time that we last looked at this in Fall Town Meeting. So there have, there is no bidding. There is no, there's, there's cost estimates by Tappe and with some help from a consulting firm on the side, but there's no real, there's no real dip into the construction industry to get pricing from contractors. And it is an inflationary environment. I, I'm a construction lawyer. I work for contractors and costs are going up.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just want to, I just, because I had heard that from, I won't name the source, but you know, when I was getting tours of Lynch, that's what I was hearing directly. And that's without actually asking, I was just people telling me what was going on. So that stuck in my mind. And then when I saw the numbers and I, when I look back to the 217, 2017 master plan, I think it was $3.5 million. Now it's 5.9, but like you say, and that's good information, that that was predicated on kind of information from last summer. So if we're looking at now, as we all know, you know, just what's going on with inflation and then supply chain.
We've been adding, for my construction clients, we're adding force majeure clauses in all the contracts so that there's an excuse if materials are unavailable or materials are coming in at prices higher than 10% at the time, that are up more than 10% at the time of bid. So it's, 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 it's an up environment and sporadic interruptions in delivery of materials and equipment.
And I'll just add, thank, thank you, John Miller and John Dobbins for the question. I'll add, I have started looking into the, the cost of a few NSBA school projects, and they are also increasing. So the average cost there, wow, has been $80 million. So I wonder what impact cost increases will have for Lynch, too. So that's something to keep your finger on the pulse of, not only the cost of Carriage House increasing, but the cost of Lynch increasing.
So I can give you a quick number on that. The estimated for the Lynch is, oh, six months ago. They don't like to put numbers out there because MSBA gets mad at people, apparently. I don't, not sure why, but it's in the range of 60, 65 million for Lynch, of which 32%, something like that, 33% will be supported by the state. So the Lynch bill is likely in the range of 40 to 42, 44 million, something like that. But you know, that's without considering inflation.
Right. Okay, and so now to address Pamela's question. So if the cost increases and more free cash is used, that, that curve would just come down. So, um, of course, our estimates are based on the information we have before, before us today. And so should that cost increase and healthcare cost increase, then of course, our operating reserves would decline. But I can, I can bring that back up. But yeah, so I don't think it would change what I showed. So FY '24 is comfortable, so a little change wouldn't affect that much. FY '25, you're already in need of the operational override by more than 2%. So, okay. So now, Diab.
Could you move to your second from last slide where you showed all of the different options?
Sure. Let me bring that up. You should be seeing it now.
Yeah, cool. No, go back. Yeah. Okay, so one of the things I'm wondering about is currently Parkhurst has, the admin is using some of the classrooms. So there must be some cost in converting those back into classrooms. And so I'm wondering if that is taken into account in the move admin to modulators, move admin to rental space, et cetera.
Right, no. So our estimates here are just the cost of the administrative location and the modulators themselves. This does not include any amount of work that would have to be done to Parkhurst.
Okay. So that would mean that perhaps the costs for the, the, the three of the FinCom suggestions might be, go up a bit. I don't know how much, but certainly maybe a few hundred K, a thousand, a million, I don't know. So that might just
Yeah. Okay, so, so once you're through, Diab, I just saw John waving his hand, so. So John, could you comment?
They're carrying, they're carrying $300,000 to $400,000 for, for incidentals. There's some railings that are down on the stairs. They're going to move some, a couple petitions, they're going to, no matter what happens in any of these scenarios, there's $300,000, $450,000 of work to be done in Parkhurst to, to just get it ready. I don't think that they've, they've, starting to realize that this doesn't make any sense at all to leave the administrators and the clerk in the classrooms. So my guess is that, that, but that's still fluid. Because, so I think there's, in all these first three numbers across there, there's probably $400,000 to $500,000 for, for some kind of refurbishing work inside Parkhurst, but it's not a big deal. It's not a, not a big, big number.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And Pam, I didn't put your hand down. Do you have another question or is this from before?
I do, I have, I have another question. One before. On the rental space, I, I was wondering, because you mentioned that it looks like there's a reasonable one in Woburn. And my understanding was that we do have, I just want to make sure that when we are looking at those rental spaces and making a decision, that we have accurate information on like whether ADA accessible according to whatever standard they need is available in that. I guess what I'm asking for is, it just feels like a lot of numbers are being waved around without any way of confirming that these things are actually what the case will be. And I feel like we're making decisions that we're going to be told need to change or we need to, we need to approve more money out of free cash because things cost more than what we initially anticipated. I want to avoid that.
Yes.
You could provide a little bit of clarity on the difference between having to take the money out of free cash versus being able to roll it into a debt exclusion override. And I had mentioned some questions I had about, and I actually, I think one of your FinCom members has answered this, questions about what the triple, loss of the AAA bond rating does to our interest rates and whether or not that could significantly increase our costs over the life of projects that get approved if we do drop down in our bond rating. So I kind of threw a lot in there. Thank you.
No, sure. So for the ADA compliance part, I'm not sure about the quote for Cummings Park. I can check that and have that, okay. So John is saying, yes, it was?
Yeah, no, it's, it's in a Yeah, no, it's, it's in a Cummings, it's in one of the office buildings with elevators and everything else. No, it's commercial space.
Okay. So that handles that. So as for the difference between free cash and debt service, so free cash is really the town's savings and rainy day funds. So it, it's historically been used for projects at spring in town meeting for needs that come up for extra costs that were unanticipated. So that's why the select board has a policy of keeping it between six and 10%. And so that's related to the Moody's question because Moody's thought that six percent was a little on the low side compared to other towns that have triple A bond ratings. So we're doing the town this service if the operating reserves get too low. On the other hand, debt service is, can be attractive, but you want to look at the total debt amount. That's what Moody's does. Are we able to pay this debt? When in, interest rates increase, it will take longer to pay off. And we, we do have other needs in town for, for, for cash, free cash and, and debt service. Now, the third question is the impact of the bond rating. So that would, could be a considerable increase in future borrowing. So last night you, you heard of all the projects where we need to borrow. And we haven't put a number to how much more it would cost the town. But I mean, we could look at scenarios. If our interest rate goes up a point, what does that mean to the total budget? And how much will that squeeze the town? So we can absolutely do that. Um, now, if someone on the finance committee wants to add, Tom, please jump in.
Yeah, I just did a little bit of research and there, the, the, his, the spread between triple A and double A bonds, municipal bonds can fluctuate between fifteen and thirty basis points. Historically, depending on the interest rate environment, it, you know, it's complicated because the interest rate curve curves change, you know, daily, weekly, monthly, yearly. So, so what does that mean? Fifteen basis points on a million dollars is fifteen hundred dollars of interest. Thirty basis points is three thousand dollars of interest. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's not huge, but it's something. You know, it would affect all of our borrowing going forward. It takes, it takes a while. We, we've heard that it takes a while to come back from a double A to a triple A period of years. So.
And that's compounded. It's compounded. So. So Pam, does that sufficiently answer your questions?
It does. Thank you.
Sure. Kathleen?
Just unmute. I had a couple of questions. With the third option. I'm sorry, second option, where there's sixteen modulars. Does that option assume that some students will be in the Parkhurst? Does the administration take up the entire building? That's one question. And the sec, go ahead, John.
Or I, I. I was, I was just, I was just alerting to Megan that I, I, I think we've, I, was that any at PVC meeting where we discussed that? I just learned, learning Megan. Go ahead, Kathy. Sorry.
Oh, that's right. Sixteen module classrooms is a lot of expense also in a project. And it's money that basically is just huge and you obviously don't ever see the benefit of it later. The question I have also, has the school department, a school committee done an analysis of available classrooms in all of our schools? Particularly our elementary, if we're looking at potential swing space.
Sure. No. So I have an estimate for your second question. And while I'm pulling that up, John, can you take the first please?
Yeah. So, so that second shaded box is kind of, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, it's a bit of a straw man, Kathy, because because the, when, what, the last time EFPPC met, the school, the, the official position of the school committee was that two grades were moving out of Lynch. Not, not the entire school. And so the, the location of the, the site that was picked for Lynch was in part based on the notion that the existing Lynch would remain. Four of the six grades would remain. The new school would be built and they take down the, the Easterly section where the central office used to be for parking. So when the, when the site selection was made, that was the plan. And the last time EFPPC met, two grades were going to move. And I, I think, you know, Jay, Jay Nardone has been saying all along, I keep, I keep trying to tell the school committee, they want to, they should want to move everybody. Okay. So now since we've met, the last time EFPPC met, th- this was, this was a comment, this was to, this, things have changed. I heard the superintendent say last night that, that they, their plan is to move everyone out. But that, that has not been, that has not been official yet that I, that I've heard from the school committee. So that second box to the left is kind of, okay, well, if, setting aside whether there's open seats and we can encourage kids to go to other schools, what we're going to do is we're going to repurpose the, the central office where central office is now. They're in, they're in eight classrooms. Those are going to become classrooms again. The, the, there, there's, there's two modules up there. They're going to become classrooms. And then they're going to add these modulars. So the, the, the sixteen is just eight more than the, 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 the left box. Because the, that's, there's eight classrooms that central office would move out of. But there's, there, there really wasn't a study that said, this is, this is the plan. We have yet to hear from the school committee at EFPPC, what is the, how many kids are actually moving and where?
Right. What, what John said is, is spot on. In, in open meetings of the school committee, they have discussed moving all kids. And you're right. Dr. Hackett said it last night, but from our understanding, that has not been an instruction to EFPPC. It, it's not finalized, that that's the path forward. And as you point out, or as, as Don pointed out, it, it's really hard to estimate the cost of these modulars if you don't know how many kids you'll have there. Now to your other question, Kathleen, about how many open classrooms. So we haven't heard that number from the schools, but what we have done is taken their numbers on the projected enrollment. And I think Dr. Hackett shared that's last night. And based on the numbers, we estimate there are five sections, ninety to a hundred ten students that are now open into the K to five range. Keeping the classes at their minimum target size, which is eighteen for K to two and twenty for three to five. And those same numbers suggest there are sixteen sections available before these classes reach their upper target size. So what, what's difficult is we don't know exactly where the openings are. So we assume that the Lynch students could be moved to multiple elementary schools. But it, it is a complicated process. I know some Lynch families have asked to be moved to other schools. So we, the, the number that we estimate is five sections. That's a long-winded answer to your question. Okay. And so, sure, great. So you look like Jimmy. But maybe you're not. Maybe my eyesight's bad. Diana's iPad.
Yeah. It's me. Yeah, I'm, I'm, Diane is my wife. Just going to throw in my two cents. I was on EFPPC for twenty-five years and chairman for twenty-three years. And just getting back to the Sanborn House, ten years ago, when we did an estimate, it was six million dollars back then. And I, I don't know what the FPC has maybe taken out of it. But I think you're going to look at whatever you do with the carriage house. It has to be code compliant, whatever it may be used after the school committee leaves there instead of going back. I don't know what they're leaving out, but to be fully compliant ten years ago, it was six million dollars. And back when we put portables at Ambrose and what have you back, they were a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each. So I, just to give you an idea of what it costs and what it may cost now for, and also for normal elementary classrooms. It was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And we, we, we purchased them. It was easier to purchase them than to rent them and cheaper. My other big concern is I keep hearing, well, there's going to be two grades moved out or not. Let me tell you. I'm doing twenty-five years of doing this and working with other school districts. You never want to do a renovation project that's occupied unless you can help it. Like the high school, we had no choice. We couldn't find another location in town to put it. We weren't as fortunate as when you build the next door. And so we had to do that occupied. And that caused a lot of headaches. We controlled it, but it's not the ideal thing, especially within elementary school. You're going to have noise, you're going to have smell, you're going to have parking, kids running around to playgrounds. And the other thing that will probably, I don't know if you figured in, but the construction cost for Lynch is going to be more. Cause there's no contractor that is going to bid on that, knowing that it's an occupied school, that he's going to have delays. He can't work here. Now he's going to work sad. So your construction cost is going to go up more than if you move everybody out of Lynch and just build it. And so that's my experience of twenty-five years of being on that committee. We did five schools and the only two that we didn't go was Lynch and Morocco. And they got kind of bumped by the high school, but to tell you, they were scheduled before the high school, but the high school got done before them. But I think the, the cost estimate for the carriage houses, I, I think is, is very light. And, and the other thing is you make sure that there's no elementary kid in, in the Lynch school when they're doing the construction. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Jimmy. So I still see hands raised, but I assume Pamela, Kathleen and Jimmy are all set. Oh, Carol.
Thanks. Yeah. This is really helpful. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. I just have just a couple of clarifying questions. The what's going to, we keep saying this is being funded out of free cash. What's coming out of free cash if we were to go this route? It would be the interest payments on the bonds? And what is that expected? What would that be like in the article twenty-six version on an annual impact?
Right. So let me move my window.
I, I could take a little stab at that, Megan.
I, I remember around a hundred twenty-five thousand a year, but totaling a million for twenty-two to twenty-five. And then when you start the twenty-five year, you would have that payment. So if you want to, I, I can pull up that document while, while you answer. Sure, John.
So, so Carol, I mean, someone has to be the contractor.
Yep.
So over six months, the contractor is going to show up and put six million dollars worth of value into that building and have to get paid. So six million dollars is going to have to come from somewhere. So either they're, they're going to have to do some kind of a note, temporary note or something that is going to be an interest payment on it. And then the, 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 the logic, as I understand it, is that that, that debt is going, is going to be carried out of operating funds. Now they, they, they're saying operating funds, which is free cash. Okay. But the, the contractor has been paid. Now, if it's six million or eight million or 10 million, whatever it is, he's gone, they're gone. So now then the argument is, well, after Lynch is built, so, so the carriage house gets built from December of twenty-two. I mean, we're, you, you, is, this is coming up fast. I mean, they got to design it, vet it, and everything's got to start by December one. So to, to get it done by May. So on, so, so now the, everything's going on at Parkhurst. The Lynch begins, Lynch begins in January twenty-four, Lynch ends in July twenty-five, if everything goes well. If Lynch is late, then we don't, can't rent Parkhurst because people are still at Parkhurst. Okay? So if any, every, anything stacks up or loses up, we've paid the contractor six million. And now the, the, the belief is that we can recover sufficient rent from Parkhurst to take over those, that debt obligation. Now, how Mark Too Good and, and Beth are going to explain this debt to someone? I, I don't know. I mean, Kathy, you know, probably selectmen are going to former selectmen and school committee men would know better than that. But yeah, they, they got to pay the money. So it, it, it's, it's going to come out of free cash.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's not, not a budgeted item in the, in the budget now. So it would have to be coming out of free cash, right? In the foreseeable future. That makes sense. So just, did you want to say something, Megan?
I did. Thank you, Carol. So I looked up the, the, the amounts that were estimated for the options we modeled. So option one, where you have the bond anticipation notes in twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five. That starts off at like two hundred thousand, like two hundred ten thousand, two hundred forty thousand, then four hundred five thousand, four hundred ten thousand. So that totals one point two six five million. And then the general bond is issued for twenty-five years. There's the interest only payment estimate of like one hundred forty-four thousand. And the equal principal payments between five hundred seventeen and two hundred thirty-five thousand a year. So it's, it's substantial. Yeah. And so the second option, the general obligation bond, so level debt service, assuming a four point five percent interest rate. The interest only payment is like a hundred thirty-four thousand. And then from FY twenty-four to FY forty-eight, it's approximately four hundred thousand a year. So that's one option. Or there's the equal principal, and then that's a hundred thirty-four thousand upfront. And then between twenty-four and forty-eight, it's between five hundred and two hundred forty thousand a year. So those are quoted, and that's what we plugged into our model. So, yeah.
That, that gives me the general gist. So just a couple of other questions. The I think Bob Dering did raise some good questions about whether, what the cost estimates might be. Also, just the, 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 the third, the middle option there where you look at the possibility of three to five smaller modules. What is that assumption based on that you could, I mean, how do you know that they could fit in smaller modules?
Based on the size of the module and the space that is desired for the eighteen staff. That's how those estimates were put together.
Okay. And you don't have any info from the school committee about the available classrooms? You've just had to sort of back of the envelope that.
Yeah. And, and so if you remember earlier in my presentation, I called out the contingency plan of putting school admin staff in a module at Ambrose. So that's how I learned that that modular is not occupied. So that's, that's one space. And so we just had to piece together the rest. And for all these options, let, let me reemphasize. No one is perfect, but I think what the finance committee is recommending is that there be a broader discussion. And we understand the trade-offs, so we can have an informed discussion and informed vote.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense.
Could, could I add something, Megan? Could I add something? You know, we heard Dr. Hackett last night, who I, I think is great. I really like him. He's a really good guy. They're waiting till September twenty-two because they don't know yet, you know, is, is, if, they don't know yet what, what the, what it's going to look like. So as Megan said, you know, the education budget carried three, three teachers that. So as Megan said, you know, the education budget carried three, three teachers that maybe. You know, maybe they don't need, so, so what is, we don't know what's gonna happen, and, and as she said, the, the, the world is gonna be reset in September. So part, part of the reason for the fuzzy math in those three left little boxes is because until we get to September. They don't really have a good sense, are, are we, are, are we down below the one oh seven sections? Or, you know, what, what does this look like? Where, where are the, where are the open seats? What, what is gonna happen, you know, the, the River Street and the forty B stuff is a year behind this. They, they might even miss, they might even arrive after Lynch is constructed. So, so it's not, it's not, the forty Bs is not gonna im- im- impact this right away.
Okay, that's helpful. One last question, and I think I, I bet I can guess the answer. The, does Fincom have a point of view on? Sort of the long term strategy for where school administration should be housed in, in the district? What should the long term strategy be for? Where we, where we house school administration? Should it be a kind of a floating thing based on where we have capacity or? You know, and maybe there's a thought that the enrollment's dropping, and so there will be somewhere down the road space. But what is your thinking on the long term solution for school admin location?
So Fincom hasn't discussed, you know, or opined on where they should go. We, we know there, there are certain trade offs, we've tried to explore the options in the right most box. So, and, and really, we've been focused on the temporary twenty month period. Because our main focus has been Lynch and creating swing space for Lynch. So. We, we realize the carriage house checks a lot of boxes. And it's a, it would be a beautiful space. Now, if, to answer your question, Carol. I think we need to look at their requirements, their needs, and look at the options. And we'd be happy to weigh in on the financial options and. Rank them that way, but we really need to hear from the schools on what they need. And what might work, and maybe a ranking of these options, because so far. In my experience, in these meetings, some of these options have been mentioned and just immediately dismissed. But it's not always clear why, and we'd really like to see them vetted to, to come to an optimized solution. That, that is a compromise where, where it has to be. But so, again, that's a long winded answer to.
No, I think it's. Well, I think it's a good answer, and I understand it from, certainly from Fincom's point of view, and I think it's a question I have too, right? What is the long range, what is the long range vision for this? Is, is there a long range vision for this? That was looked at besides carriage house for where else might admin go? So I may, I think what you're, the point that you're making is there may be other options that haven't been explored in all of these circumstances.
Right, a- and now I'm just reminded what I said earlier about the twenty seventeen master plan that considered. Lynch, Morocco and Carriage House as potential candidates. So I think housing the school administration in an elementary school is an option. I know other towns have done something similar, either in the building or on the same site. So I, I, I think that should be a contender.
Yeah, so I, I, that's, that is a question, I'm not gonna ask you that because you're not the school committee, but like, but where are other? How do other districts deal with this, especially districts that might be in this type of financial? Situation as we're in, you know, what do they do? What is the standard for where we house our administration? We have to think about employees and employee morale and, you know, some stability for those employees and their ability to get their work done. But I'm done, I think, I'm sure there's others with their hands up here, and I appreciate this, this is very helpful.
Thank you, Carol. So I want to call on someone who hasn't spoken. So Amanda, you had your hand raised earlier, are you set or do you still have a question?
I, I was just gonna ask a question of maybe potentially Mr. Deering, because I know he's done a lot of work for the. For the schools, because I, I thought Kathleen Bodie raised it, and I, it's in my mind as well, and that is. I know that the Parkhurst space is only partially occupied. By the school administrators and that there are many available classrooms. I just wanted to hear from Mr. Deering if he knew if Lynch, the size it is now, would fit there. With the modulators as you've, as you've proposed in scenarios one and two. Is, so that's the, the assumption, I, I guess, and. So I just wanted to understand that a little bit better.
Mr. Deering, are you still? Yeah, you're here.
Hang on, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm not too sure what the population of the Lynch school is, but. I think it's more than a hundred and sixty children, which is on that, what, option three there? So Parkhurst, when we first used the swing space, that was when we did McCall, but we only used one floor because it didn't have an elevator. So the classrooms downstairs could not be used. Subsequent about, I don't know, two years ago, maybe, they actually added the elevator to the Parker school. So that school can be. Fully used. I'm, I'm just guessing off, I mean, it's been a few years since I've been involved in it. But I would think there's, there's, there's twenty classrooms in that. Or fifteen to twenty classrooms in Parkhurst when you count the, the lower level, which you can use now for its. Cause it has the elevator, so. But I, that, that thing was as temporary modular space versus a hundred and sixty kids. I, I don't know, that, that can't be the population of Lynch. It's gotta be. Pardon me? Yeah.
A hundred and sixty comes from the assumption of two grades.
Wow, okay. So you had five more grades to that, so I mean, you're up to maybe over three hundred kids at Lynch. Any case, I don't know whether you can get three hundred kids in the Parkhurst. Don't know how you.
I think. The, the assumption in, in those two things is that you, you, you use the existing classrooms plus the modulators, and together they, they equal the number of kids coming from Lynch.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, and tha- thank you for the presentation and all the scenarios, it's very helpful.
Okay, so I see hands. Kathleen, do you have another question? Or maybe that's left over.
I, I, I did my hand, but. Thank you for that point, because I, I. When you look at the number of classrooms in an elementary school, that's only one part of it. You need some safer administration, O T, P T, special ed, E S L. So there are other needs as well. The advantage of being in other elementary schools, you can do some shared. You know, some sharing of those spaces as well. So. It, it, it's some, it's, we don't have enough information, and I don't want to suggest that people in town need Michael, Michael manage the school for me hardly at all. But I do think that we need more information to vote on Article twenty six. Or keep Article twenty seven instead. Thank you for having us evening.
Thank you. So Diab, your hand is raised. Do you have another question?
Uh, yeah, actually I did, and so I've been looking at this screen for the last few minutes. And I think we're comparing apples and oranges in a sense, so I know that you, you, you made sure that you said you're only looking at short term costs. But the Article twenty six proposal is both short and long term. So for instance, it is acclaimed permanent solution. So all of the other options are actually, pardon my language, flushing money down the toilet, because. They get us through construction, but they do nothing for us after construction. While the first, the Article twenty six proposal does actually permanently take care of where a central office is. So I don't, I'm not wedded to it, but I think that we really need to subtract. So it's really the difference between all of the other proposals in Article twenty six, which gives us a real idea of what the extra costs are. So for instance, you know, I mean, it's just a straight subtraction, and that gives us what the long term costs are if we don't do Article twenty six.
Well, there's also the option of returning the school administration to Parkhurst. And so that, I think there, there's some retrofitting that was anticipated. So that cost is smaller.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding, and it's probably incomplete, is that. After the swing space is used, Lynch is an albatross. In terms of if we don't rent it out or we don't sell it, then.
Parkhurst, excuse me, not Lynch.
I'm sorry, Parkhurst, yes, no, Lynch, we definitely won't. Get rid of, but after Parkhurst is used, we're not gonna do anything with it. We can't rent it out if we have the admin space there, because no one will come, it's, just won't work. And we sell it for development. You gotta get rid of the admin, so temporarily, maybe we could move them back to Parkhurst, but in the long term, they're gonna have to go somewhere else if we want to do something else with that property.
Well, I think there might be advantages to hanging on to it, if nothing else, for the potential of meaning it a swing space again for Morocco. So that, that's one consideration. John, do you wanna weigh in? Other John, other John. John Miller, sorry.
I, I was gonna say to Kathy, the reason that, that, when, when this came to EF P B C maybe two, three months ago. They only had Article twenty six, and, and. I objected to that on the basis that, hey, there should be an alternative. I mean, so if you think about it, there's three tennis balls in the air here, that, right, there's, there's Lynch. Getting Parkhurst ready and doing the carriage house. Now, to me, the reason, reason we have Article twenty seven, and Chris made the motion, I seconded it. The reason we have Article twenty seven is it only deals with two of those tennis balls. So it's, keep, keep our eyes on Lynch, get Parkhurst ready, secure Lynch. So that's the idea of Article twenty seven. Article trick twenty six tries to do three things. So it's, it's three balls. And it's the way I think of it is, and, and so, so the, the purpose of Article twenty seven. Is to give town meeting a practical choice, because if we only had twenty six. You'd have to swallow the whole thing or put Lynch at risk, and no one really wants to, no one that I know of wants to. We are in great shape with Lynch right now.
Okay, thank you, John. Do you have any comments to Diab's question? That's what I thought I was calling you on. Just first John, then I'll get to you, hold on.
N- n- no.
Okay, thank you, John. So Brian, do you have a comment?
I do in regard to that. You're correct that, that Article twenty six is looking at a permanent home, and all the rest of them do not look at a permanent home. I think where I think that we haven't talked about is that with the elevator in Parkhurst, we actually have the ability to. An option is to move the administration back to the lower level and rent out the upper level. We do that in town with the Mystic School, where we rent out one level and not the other, and depending on who's renting it, that is an option too. So I don't think it's as simple as saying that if they move back to Parkhurst, that we can't rent anything out. That elevator has changed the calculus in that building, so that would be my response to your question about that.
Thank, thank you, Brian, that's an excellent point, and also. That reminds me, there had been some discussion about moving the four preschool classes that are in the basement. Somewhere else temporarily, maybe putting all the preschools together somewhere. And then having that space available as swing space and then later for Parker, so thank you. Diab, did you have a follow up?
Uh, no, no, I thought Brian's comments were very enlightening. I, I didn't realize there was another use for the building, so. But I think it's important to, to remember that we are comparing permanent versus temporary costs, and so that, that really has to. Whatever we do with, if we don't put it in the carriage house, eventually we do have to. Spend some money on putting them somewhere permanently, so, okay, thank you.
Fair points, and, and I hope you all realize, your, your great questions are informing. What we'll say at town meeting when this comes out, so thank you in advance. Carol?
Uh, yeah, I guess I have a little bit of a follow up question on that, that was a good discussion thread. Because I, I think it'd be, it'd be wonderful if we could afford a permanent solution, right? Like, I think if money were not an object, renovating the carriage house would be an easier decision to make. I, I'm trying to remember if I heard in one of the presentations that one of the assumptions, this goes back to where, you know, how are we funding this? What, one of the assumptions I think they were making, whoever was advocating for this. That we would be able to, if we did renovate the carriage house and move the admin in there. We would then be able to rent. Parkhurst and the rental money from that revenue would help to pay the debt on the carriage house. Is that, is that what the assumption was? And then what, if anything, are the flaws in those assumptions? I know there are unknowns around whether or not we might need Parkhurst for Morocco, some say we don't need it, but. There's always unknowns about whether we might, so that, that point, if someone were to make it that if we do this. We can then rent Parkhurst down the road, and that would help reimburse the free cash.
Right, so. We, we did hear a proposal and an estimate of how much rental income Parkhurst could garner. One concern about that. Is all the upfront work that might have to be performed to permit occupancy. Especially if it's being rented, so. Over the years, D P W has come up with a list. Of required work for, for Parkhurst. Including the HVAC system, the roof, removing asbestos, and also. Plumbing and water line maintenance, so it's, it's not clear. To the finance committee, what, how much all of that will cost. And also, in, in looking at projected rental income. It's. It's, we wanna believe it, but. We've just, it, it reminds me of potential revenue for synthetic fields, for grass fields. And there, there's all, always. Asterix and, and scenarios, and until you have people knocking at the door, you know, with cash in hand. It's, it's difficult to, to really believe it. That said, I, I think, you know, hiring a financial, not, a financial consultant, a real estate consultant. To look at that and to give us an estimate would be worthwhile.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, let's see, who's next, Mr. Deering?
Yes, just one quick clarity, classification rather. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, when Chris Nixon did his first. Enrollment projection figuring in the forty B, the houses are switching over. That Parkhurst was included as space that would be used for classrooms, and I don't know if that's changed at all, but. I'm pretty sure when he first did it, his projection included that the Parkhurst would have to be used for classrooms.
So, sorry, could, could you repeat that?
Okay. I, I think I understood it correctly, when Chris Nixon first did his enrollment projections. Based on all the forty Bs and the changing in houses and people modernizing up, and more kids are moving in. That Parkhurst was part of one of the schools that have to be used for that increase in population.
Okay, so you're, you're calling back to the master plan.
Yeah, I just don't know if that's changed, I mean, because it looks like if you're thinking about renting the Parkhurst though, can't very well do that if you're gonna use it for the classrooms.
Sure, so my understanding is Parkhurst is very close to Ambrose, so if anything, the Mystic School is designated as the sixth. Elementary school, and I, I'm seeing a friendly nod and a thumbs up, so thank you, Brian.
Okay.
Sure, okay, so we got Mr. Deering, we got Diab. Pamela, do you have another question?
I do, thank you. I'm curious about the timing of this. Has anybody done? Has anybody done any kind of, um, just risk analysis that if the project takes longer um, to complete or, um, placing the administration? And we have to start moving the Lynch kids into Parkhurst and start our construction on Lynch. What kinds of costs would we be incurring, um, to have the, the administration temporarily housed somewhere? And then, uh, Carol's question about long term, oh, Deabs, I, I apologize. Deabs' question about long term, um, analysis of pros and cons. I, I think that would be an interesting, I don't know if it's something you guys can do in time for the next town meeting, but I do think it would be an interesting thing to look at. What, how do these, how do these give us options or cost savings or additional burdens of costs in the future so that we can think about things a little bit longer term? Thank you.
Okay, so the cost of delays, I have not seen a number, but, um, anticipated costs would be renting modulars for longer periods of times. Um, those are, are easy delays, but the worst case would be if delays prevent Lynch and impact Lynch construction. Um, and, and so that could be costly across the board. Um, I looked to, to John Miller or other FinCom members who might have more information on that.
You could go back to the slide you showed, you just go back a couple of slides to the schedule. So, the, the, the chara-, this is from, this is by Tape, the, uh, the architect. And I don't know who worked the slide. I, I didn't, I didn't rework the slide, but the, the, uh, the design, the carriage house, you see this, if, if, if this is approved, there's four months for design. That's the doc, what, that was, that's what documents mean. And then two months for bid. Go out in the public street and get, get quotes and hire a contractor. Then there's six months to build from December first to the end of May. And then the next, the next thing that happens is during June, the central office would move. And then in July, the Parkhurst refitting would begin July and August. And then in time for the Lynch students to, to move uh, and be get, be there in September. So, you know, i- i- if the carriage house is, is delayed, you had, you'd have to make a decision about whether or not to delay central office moving and maybe delaying the Lynch move until Christmas or Christmas vacation, something like that. But, so there, there are possibilities, but, you know, there's no, there's no float in there. I mean, that's, that, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a tight schedule. I think everyone agree, I, I, everyone would agree with that. It's, everything has to go well for this to work.
Let me, um, mention some, um, points I heard, you know, w- we asked, uh, the schools and, um, Chris Nixon exactly for that, you know, what are the impacts of the delays? And, um, Chris Nixon said, uh, that Tape A is, sees no, uh, potential delays for their thirteen month projection, which is in the schedule. And, and in fact, they could maybe start a little earlier for the document preparation and pull that in. Um, I wanna make sure I hit the highlight. So he, he did think there was some compacting, um, that would be possible. Um, but there are always unknown, there could be unknowns and, um, it does seem to us, to non-experts, that it's, it's an aggressive schedule. Okay. That's Deab, so Deab, do you have another question?
Uh, no, sorry, I, I forgot to lower my hand.
No problem. Charlene? Oh, that, William. Oh, you're, you're muted, you're muted.
Hi, um, I'm hiding here with, uh, Charlene. I, I'm an imposter. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, can you, uh, show the, uh, the different options there, that critical slide that that we've been talking about, if you could just move ahead to that. Um, I just wanted, it's really, I'm not quite sure what the question is and whether you can address this, but I'm wondering if, uh, either finance committee is working off the same set of assumptions about what's going to happen with Lynch for the construction. As what I've heard, um, being presented by the, uh, school, uh, at the school committee hearings and as well as some recent, um, select board meetings. And it seemed that the net of those presentations gave the impression that they were going to take all the kids out of Lynch during construction and put them somewhere. And, uh, because they needed to take some land, uh, the select board needed to take some land in, in the well field behind Lynch to um, accommodate that, that approach. And, uh, so is your set of assumptions is that there's only a few number of students that would be moved? You know, to wherever they might go and, uh, or is it everybody moving somewhere? And
That, that's a good question and what we have heard, so we've heard the same things at school committee meetings that, um, they discussed all students, uh, leaving Lynch and the benefits of that. But EFPPC, um, John Miller is our representative and he's attended all the meetings. And they are still working from the proposal of just moving two grades. And the understanding that the finance committee has is that the schools will make the decision of how many kids would leave Lynch in the fall once the enrollment has been finalized. And John Miller, please weigh in if, if you
Well, the, the well, the well field is, the well field is not connected with this issue. The well field is, is north of the new Lynch. So closer to Woburn from the new Lynch. So the, the, the old Lynch is in the south, the new, the new Lynch is north of that, the well field is north of that. So the, the, the well field is not related to how many kids are gonna swing.
I, I thought, and maybe I'm incorrect, that it was related to, because the overall idea was to get all the kids out of there and have the site completely, um, accessible and, uh, available for the new Lynch to be positioned in the right place and
Go back to the, go back to the slide from Tape A, Megan. So this is, this is from Tape A, this is the last schedule I saw presented to EFPPC and you'll see that midway down, this is prepared by Tape A, the architects and it occupy, assumes two grades and need to occupy by September twenty third. So when, when the original site, the new site for Lynch was picked, there, there had been no decision yet to move all students out of Lynch. I think Jane Ardone has been advocating for that and I, I heard, you know, Bob Dearing would, would say, hey, of course you wanna move all the kids. But as of, as of the time when this schedule was made with respect to the carriage house, that decision has not been made and had not been made, although people like Bob Dearing, Jane Ardone have been recommending to the school committee all along that, hey, hey, guys, you really wanna move all the kids. But this, the site pick for the new Lynch is not on top of the old Lynch. It's, and part of the rationale for that, for that was that you could leave students at Lynch. I think people are coming to realize that the noise and the, the blah, 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 it's probably not a good idea. But, um, you know, so, but the, the new site of Lynch was picked before any of this happened, the well field is north of that. They need to, they need to move the well field because part of the new school is right on top of the, a little bit of the well field.
So just, yeah, I think in summary, I think we all expect all of Lynch to be moved out, but it, it has not been decided officially. So that, that's our understanding.
Well, just to, I'll stop then, if that's, if, if that's what you're, there is an assumption around that scenario, then that means you ought to perhaps amend your slides or add an initial slide of are all those costs about moving kids around and so many modular classrooms, et cetera, predicated on scenario A, two, two, two grades move or scenario B, five grades move. I mean, you're only, you only have, you kinda know that's floating around and in fact, it's being communicated to the, uh, parent community and, 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 uh, the select board is making certain kind of decisions that might improve your analysis if you have that implicit assumption. I know you don't have the official version, but if, if that's kinda being stuck in a box that is obsolete.
But, but, but it affects the two options in the, the identically. In other words, if, 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 if three more grades move out of Lynch, they gotta go somewhere. So they're, they, they, they either gotta go to, you know, it, the, the options are gonna grow, grow the same. The A and B options are gonna grow by the same amount. You know what I'm, you know what I'm saying? So, so the other slide that we were looking at, the alternatives, that, those prices, uh, to me, those prices are tentative until the school committee commits. There's, they, they, are, are they gonna encourage some students to move to other elementary schools? Um, how many kids are gonna show up in September? Are there gonna be a hundred and seven sections or gonna be less? Um, you know, th- those things are still in the air and that's why I think Hackett is right to be cautious about announcing a plan as to what's gonna happen at Lynch, cause they don't know yet.
Oh, I was just, there are costs. We, we put our assumptions of how many modulars are included, but
So if, but if there's eight modulars, that's one number. If it's sixteen modulars, it's a, quite a different number. They all go up, but it makes the Article, Article twenty six look less bad. Because instead of
No, because if you add eight modulars in Article twenty seven, eight, eight more mods, let's say you move another, another two grades and you add eight more modules in Article twenty seven, well, you're gonna have to add, add them into Article twenty six too.
Okay, fair enough. Anyway, I just wanted to bring, make sure everybody's working off the same, there's set of assumptions.
We, we can add that note. So, so thank you, thank you, Bill. Milin?
Hi, thanks, Megan. Um, I just wanted to point out to everyone, I know there's a lot of details and a lot of like considerations and stuff like that. But Article set twenty seven thus moved Lynch forward. And we can debate Article twenty six. But one of the things that's not being, at least I haven't heard it repeated the point out. And Megan, if you can pull up the slide for Ambrose, is that, and I think it's an excellent point, I think, I forgot who made it, about finding a permanent home for the central office. But it is not required. A, having Lynch, there's not required the carriage house. B, the carriage house is not necessarily the required permanent home. Because if you look during the six months, December through May, that construction is during the time when kids are in school, they cross that, that path there was this kid walk, kids walking to Ambrose up High Street. There are lots of kids and that puts kids in danger. Uh, in terms of like a permanent home, that's great. Does not have to be the carriage house or does it really have to be the carriage house? Cause it puts kids in danger if you do that construction. And that construction also requires that it be pushed very, uh, in six months. And then you're putting kids in danger for six months. Twenty seven allows the time to explore other places, other possibilities for a permanent home. I know several people mentioned that without putting any kids in danger for the carriage house. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, just one more, uh, observation. Uh, Parkhurst is a very small site. It's on a hill. And have anybody figured out where sixteen modular classrooms would fit on that site?
I've seen some sketches, but, but John Miller can probably speak to that more.
Yeah, Tape A has some, has, has a couple of different ideas. They're, they're considering if, if need be, they could either go up to the upper field too. So it's, it's not ideal. It's not, no one wants to put twenty four classrooms up there, modules or sixteen or however many they, you know, it's not gonna be ideal. But, you know, it, it can be done on the upper field and the idea would be to then restore the field after they, after they go.
Megan
They're rented by, they rent them now. They rent them, they're not gonna buy.
To jump in, Brian.
I just wanna respond to that, that the sixteen modulars are only needed if the decision is made, if, if twenty six does not pass and the decision is made on twenty seven to keep central office slash admin in Parkhurst and move all of Lynch to Parkhurst. We don't need sixteen modulars there for, uh, we're told we don't need sixteen modulars if admin has been moved out and we move all of Lynch in. We only need the eight modulars, so we're told. So it's only in this real, this sort of like unique situation where we choose to keep central office and Lynch all in Parkhurst at the same time. Um, which is a more expensive option than, uh, moving admin out to rental space because of the price of modulars is higher. The price of those extra eight modulars is higher than any estimate of renting space for two years.
Thanks for the clarification. I can see how we can improve our slide just to call that out with more clarity. Carol?
I thought I was done, but I, I have, this conversation's been really interesting. Um, just to, just the, the slide that come, well, don't leave this slide yet because it's interesting. Um, when Milin mentioned the danger to the students, I have, I think we need to be careful. I don't know whether the construction experts could guarantee there's a way to fence all that off and keep the construction area completely separate from the school. It does look like there is space in between them. So I don't know who's got the construction expertise on this call. Who could comment on, is there a way to do that safely? I know my kids were at McCall while they were in a building that had construction happening adjacent, like in the building. The building was being built while my, my kids were having, you know, hearing construction noise. Um, now that's middle school, but, um, nonetheless. Um, so I guess the question is like, is, we don't know yet for sure. Do we or do we not know that that would be dangerous to students? That's a strong statement to make. Um, and then I guess secondly, I am intrigued with this idea of, and I don't know if there's a way to do the financial analysis on it, and I do think it probably does, to your point, Megan, require a real estate um, expert that could say the rentability of the market um, value of Parkhurst likelihood that could be rented. Um, if that, if the likelihood of that being rented, if it were all available once Lynch is done, um, then the incremental five million that we're gonna spend on, uh, on twenty, Article twenty six over Article twenty seven theoretically recaptured by some of the rent. Right? So the, the option, the cat, the cash flow associated with, uh, Article twenty six is an incremental five million over Article twenty seven. But in the end, you're, you've got permanent space that theoretically allows you to capture rent from Parkhurst, assuming a Realtor could tell you that that's true.
Right. That's our understanding.
Okay, I mean, can we, can someone answer the danger question? Do we have, do we really know that's a dangerous situation?
So I, I think that was proposed if you look at the access point. So, um, for any Ambrose parents on the call, you know, this is a popular path to school and there's already, um, a teacher stationed at that intersection. And, um, the principal, Phelan, has identified that as a hazardous intersection. So I, I think the assumption was that there are no other access points to the construction site. I mean, maybe, so i- if you go behind Ambrose, you, you don't, there's not a path to the street. So something, you'd have to make access through the, the field there or in front of the Sanborn House. So, so that's what informed that. But, um, I, I'll defer to anyone else with more construction expertise. Maybe Bob
There's no other, there's no other way in and out of the site, Carol. That, that's it. You got, that's the There's no other, there's no other way in and out of the site, Carol, that, that's it, you got, that's the driveway, that's the one driveway into the site, that's it. That's how you get to the Sandborne House.
Yeah, I, I just don't know, like, so is that, is that, did the EFPBC answer that question about the danger on, on, of doing this? I mean, I assume they talked about that, I hope they talked about that, what would their plan have been for doing this construction and keeping the kids safe?
I, I have not heard a discussion.
Can, can I add something, Megan?
Of course.
That during the, having watched the school committee during their decision of whether to go to build a new central office in Lynch. Versus going to the carriage house, there was discussion about not wanting to have central office. This is a peripheral to safety of not wanting to have central office in a school. Because there are safety issues surrounding that. And there was some pushback on the school committee from members saying that carriage house is on a school site, though not technically connected to a school. So that is talking a little bit about safety, safety is not really our purview. I mean, it is if somebody gets hurt, but otherwise it's somebody else sort of worries about it. But it is something else that they talked about when we talk about safety, not just construction safety, but ongoing safety of having. The central office in a, an active school site.
Thank you, Brian. And I mean. Costs of lawsuits, costs of life, so I, I think. We're just trying to, to point out and convey the risks that we've discussed. Steve?
Uh, good evening, thank you, Megan, and thanks to the finance committee for holding this forum. It's, it's really helpful, really informative, it's complicated stuff that we're trying to figure out here, so more information's better. I had a question, some friends of mine have told me that they're receiving emails from some of their neighbors and friends in Winchester claiming that. Article 26 is required if you also want article 27. Can you please bring some clarity to that statement and give me the finance committee's position on that? Does that make sense or is that not true?
That's not true. So as Milin stated, and you know, as is shown here. You, you are creating swing space for Lynch under both of these options. And 27 can do it in and of itself. And furthermore. Where did I see this? There was a position paper or an email response. And in Chris Nixon's own words said that 27 is a path forward to Lynch in and of itself.
I, I, I know what that is, it's, there was a motion, there was the motion that created article 27. It, it says in the motion itself that this is an independent path to prepare Parkhurst. So the idea was that article 26 and article 27 are independent of one another, that's, that's by design, that's on purpose. It's, the minutes of the meeting of the FPC, I can send those around, Steve, if you want.
See, I found it, John, thanks for, you know, entertaining the, I don't mean this in a bad way, but thank, thanks for entertaining the crowd while I had time to look up my, my document. Thanks for contributing material to, through the conversation, that's a better way of saying it. Okay, so exactly what John said, so there was a question, yeah, if EFBC would consider an amendment to 27. Um, that would allow Parkhurst to be ready for swing space. And used with central office temporarily relocating and renting space. And so in that answer. One sentence that jumped out at me is that to be able to have students offsite by fall of 2023. We must fund articles 26 and 27 or at the very least 27 on its own. So that confirms what we've been saying, they're two independent paths to creating Lynch, uh, swing space for Lynch and having Lynch succeed. Okay. Let's see, I, I think that. Bob had his hand raised, do you have another question or comment? I'll try to unmute you, hold on. Ask him mute.
There we go, okay, okay now?
Yes.
Just the safety issue, when we did the Ambrose school. The kids went to the swing space at Parkhurst and they had to walk up High Street. We had a, a police officer there at the construction gate for the kids crossing and all that. I mean, it's not ideal, don't get me wrong, but I mean, we did make a, an effort to have a safety officer there for the kids crossing in front of Ambrose, walking to Parkhurst. So it can be done, it's not always like you'd like to do it, but that was the, really the only option of getting the kids up the hill to Parkhurst.
Well, that's a good point, so maybe the safety concern could be allayed if an additional crossing guard is put that there, which is an additional expense. So I'm sure it could be mitigated, but it just has to be called out and addressed. Uh, thank you, Brian?
Um, thank you, Megan, I, I apologize if this is not something that, or I've heard before. But does anybody know what the cost to build the needed space for? The administration would be if it was not done in a renovation. And it was done, we had a free piece of land and we just built whatever it was we wanted on that other space.
So I know that John has pulled that thread a bit. John Miller, will you comment on that? Is John Miller still here? Yeah. Maybe he stepped away, so we'll, we'll call him back, so. Um, I know he's looked at building a standalone house. Or, or structure for the, uh, school administration, but I'm not sure of the price, but that's something we can look up and get back to you, Brian.
Thank you.
Milin?
Hi. I know this, I am not an expert on danger or not, but there is a difference between. Walking by a site, which obviously kids have to walk by other construction sites related to homes being renovated and stuff like that versus. It's right there, the only path into the carriage house is that particular driveway. So yeah, no, I'm not an expert on that. I guess the other thing is. The bottom line question is to me, do we want to spend more time and figure out a permanent home? Where we do not spend, if you take 18 and divide it by 5.98. It's basically a third is 332, almost about third of a million dollars per FTE. To build the carriage house, or do we want to spend time and figure this out? Other possibilities, lots of them, different scenarios. If we don't do 26, it gives us time to figure it out and not have to spend a third of a million dollars per FTE. And then we spend our time on Lynch in article 27.
Thank you, Milan. While Milin was speaking, I was scrolling madly through a document that John has put together because he did look at that standalone cost. So I'll continue to look, so we're past our seven PM stop, but it's been a great discussion. Thank you all for your interest and your time. Are there any other comments from anyone on the finance committee? Okay, hearing none, feel free to reach out if you have additional questions. We are preparing, uh, maybe like a five page document that could be distributed summarizing some of the points we discussed tonight. Just for reference and for those who couldn't attend, so thanks again, good night.